Good morning, good morning. My name is Brian Battle. I am a school board member. Thanks for coming out this morning. We're going to go through a little bit of opening. We have a board forum, so we're going to open up a meeting. We'll make a couple of introductory remarks. We've got a presentation to go through and try to get to all your questions. So with that, we're going to call the school board meeting to order. We're going to begin with a roll call. And to do the roll call, I'm going to have board members kind of introduce themselves. And just a little quick background, you know, I've got connections completely different, right? So I'm Brian Battle. Been on the school board for about 16 years. My kids include the system, both in college right now.
Joe Ruffalo, I've been on the board for eight years. All three of my kids, my three are Barrington schools and all are university level right now.
Good morning, Sandra Brantford. I've been on the board 10 years now. It's sort of my third term. I have one in college, one in preschool, and one in middle school.
Usually low tax, I've been on the board for four years. And I have two kids that are in middle school, but not this middle school, station.
So can you guys share us with our microphones?
Speaker with you.
Okay. So besides the board members here, we also have several administrators who may also be answering some of your questions. So I just wanted to go around the room and let them introduce themselves and what their roles are that they are in the district. I'll start with Brian.
Brian here, superintendent of schools. I'm Dave Byer, the assistant superintendent of business services and chief school business official. I'm Travis Lowndes, the principal here at Prairie.
I'm Beth Jones. I'm the assistant superintendent for student services.
I'm Samantha Pash, I'm the director of communications.
John Grecia, I'm the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. You can just back there too. Kate?
Hi, I'm Gracey Matthews. I'm the professor of anthropology.
Samantha worked on the mailer that went out. Did anybody get the mailer in their box this weekend? A couple people. Okay, good. That's good. The rest are coming. The rest of you, you should be getting them soon. So now that, we'd like to know a little bit about who's in the room, right? So first, let me start. Who would like more wisdom? Raise your hand. Okay. So we've got a bunch of smart people in the room. So let's just kind of start with kind of a little bit of kind of family practice. Are there any, do we have any parents here with young children that are not yet in school? Okay. Do we have parents where your oldest child is in elementary? Okay. Do we have parents where your oldest child is in middle school? Okay. Parents whose oldest child is at the high school? Okay. Parents who's had some kids that have graduated from high school? Do we have, yeah, we get, do we have any residents that are here that have no children in these schools? And how many are, have grandparents or great grandchildren or great grandchildren in these schools? Very good. Very good. So thank you for coming out this morning. Now, we asked people, they were coming in, right, just to kind of try to, if you've got questions, lock it in the door, what they might be. And we've got a couple posted though, so we'll ask Beth, you want to just hear, I'm going to pass the mic on to you. Want you to just read what we got so far?
Okay, the first question is, what if the board's plan of enrollment, what is the board's plan if enrollment continues to fall? Building consolidation question. After the current bonds are paid off in 2021, how much will the property tax fall if the referendum fails for a $500,000 home? What is the total not incremental tax cost of the bonds for a $500,000 home? Does this bond referendum provide capacity for the possible Hoffman Estates housing expansion? What does the school district consider their strengths and weaknesses for safety and security? Does the improved safety and security include additional staff? And what type of training would they receive? And what is the current annual bond debt's annual cost? What will the bond debt be for Barrington 220?
Okay, those are, those are very good questions. I think that we've got, Dr. Harris is going to go through in a little bit here a presentation. And I think we can probably try to get to most of those questions in the context of the presentation. And Beth, I'd ask you, as we're going through the front elements of the presentation, if we don't touch on it, remind us to. And then at the end, if there's any we haven't gotten to, we'll try to get to those. Are there any other questions before we kind of begin the presentation that people have? That we've captured up here on your board? Okay. We hope that this presentation, it's intended to be informal, right, and conversational. Trying to generate a conversation here. So as we go through kind of each section, if you're going to find, the board is going to weigh in on, we'll give you a little bit of the history on some of this stuff. And I'll, before we begin, I'm going to actually go back a little bit because we've gotten a lot of questions about, you know, was this a planned referendum? Did this just come up on the board at the last minute? You know, I was at the high school yesterday doing a, we did an information session, sorry, Saturday, for some folks. And I had a bunch of parents who came up to me and said, this should have been done eight years ago. How come you guys didn't do this eight years ago? And, you know, I explained to them that actually there were people that came up eight, 10 years ago to the board and wanted to make improvements in the classroom. They wanted to make improvements to different fine arts athletic facilities. They, you know, we've had some of our building folks say, you know, we have really big major issues, HVAC issues in the buildings, right? You know, what can we do? The board for the last 10 years, right, has essentially said, we're trying to defer all these major expenditures until the debt is paid off. The debt that the community invested in the schools, you know, back in the, in the late 90s, all the way up through kind of building referendum in 2000. Right? So that represented, that debt, right, represents today about, from the school, if you look at the school district financials, it's about $11.5 million a year we're paying in debt service, principal and interest. Right? We've always tried to structure, you know, our debt service to be leveled so there wouldn't be big surprises to taxpayers. Right? That's the amount of money that's kind of coming off the books. And so for the last 10 years, the board has said, we'll, we'll have the conversation with the community, the conversation we're having right now, once those bonds are coming off. So this has been kind of planned for a while. Now, in preparation for that, a couple of years ago, we began a conversation with Dr. Harris and his staff to say, let's start planning for that conversation, right? And the one thing we had never really had was a long-term master facility plan. Alright, so we asked Brian and his staff to try to create that. And we did that through work we did with an architect, DLR, and a lot of community meetings. We had, we had community meetings at every building, looking at the needs of the building. We had engineers that went through each building and kind of determined, you know, the existing needs of each building, as well as projected needs for educational purposes. And throughout that two-year process, we created a really nice master facility plan for the community. Now, if you want to do everything that's on that wish list, it's a big number, right? It's $500, $600 million there, right? And I think the board said, okay, we know we're not going to do all of that at one time. Right? So let's figure out how we can take that big list and narrow it down to our most urgent needs. Right? And we engaged a lot of community groups, including a referendum advisory committee that had over 50 different Barrington area organizations represented. The end result is the referendum that is before us now. And as we go through the conversation today, you know, Brian will, will talk a little bit about the journey, what's in it. And then the board will try to also articulate kind of how we were able to focus kind of the, the needs identified in the master plan down to the priorities that are in front of us today. So without further ado, I'll turn the mic over to our superintendent, Brian Harris, and let him walk through the presentation.
Good morning, again, thank you for being here this morning. If this gets a little loud, let me know. My voice carries really well, so I can back off, but that's all right. I want to make sure everybody can hear what I'm saying. First and foremost, as Brian said, we've been planning for this for a while. So this is not something that's been put together the last minute. We've done a significant amount of work, whether it's staff or the community, through a couple rounds throughout the community, to put together ideas for this plan. So back in December, the board approved the actual referendum question that's going to go on the ballot. So those of you, all of you, hopefully will vote on April 2nd. And obviously, that's why you're here. And this is the actual question you will see. It is a long run-on sentence written by attorneys for attorneys. So therefore, to make sure that the bond issuance is appropriate and follows all guidelines. I think one of the key aspects, a couple important components here I want to point out because we're going to talk through it here. One is right here in this third line. It says, "Build and equip additions to and alter repair and equip existing buildings." So everything in this referendum will be done on existing buildings, additions, renovations, improvements. There was no new schools involved in this bond issuance if it passes on April 2nd. In other words, a year from now, the board or future board can't turn around and say, wow, we're going to spend $20 million on a new elementary school. Can't do that, okay, legally. So therefore, it's only to improve and add on to it and update the existing facilities. There are some other key phrases here for everyone to understand. Obviously, a focus on instructional spaces, update some of our hardest used areas. Safety and security is a big issue. We'll talk about that in a minute. And then fix what we have. One final thing is the elimination of the mobile classrooms. And actually, this building is one of the head mobile classrooms since 2007. We'll talk about that in a, in a minute as well. So as Brian had mentioned, and again, we've spent the last two years working on this opportunity to go out to the community to ask for this permission to do some of this work. And we had multiple feedback sessions, lots of community engagement opportunities. How many people in here actually attended one of those over the last couple of years? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. That's helpful because we, you know, that's why we, we start out with some ideas and we get people's reaction. We come back, we tweak them, we prioritize them. And that's why we land where we landed here. And again, the vote on this particular issuance is on April 2nd. So here's the four main priorities. And you have a handout that you picked up on the way in that will provide some additional information in detail that talks about these four areas. And I've got a slide on each one. First and foremost, improving safety and security in our schools. This is clearly one of the highest priorities in this entire master facility plan. And we, and the board chose to put all of these major components that were recommended by architects into this particular question. This is a national conversation and a local conversation. School safety and security is critical. And a lot of our buildings were built and designed during different timeframes over the years. And they aren't all equipped and have the best opportunities appropriate for our kids. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. Updating classrooms prepared kids for success. That's our core business. It's what we do every day, is provide excellent education for students. So we want to make sure that we, you know, we have that included in this bond issuance as well. Maintaining our community's investment in our schools. That's basically fixing what we already have. Plumbing, electrical, all those types of things. Roofs, major investment in, as part of this. And finally, updating the educational community spaces for arts and athletics. This is primarily in this particular question at the high school level. We had included those across all of our buildings, but again, we had to prioritize. And the board chose to focus on the high school level throughout with this bond issuance. So let's talk about each one for a minute. First, the safety and security. As we went through the community conversations and the board quickly became to realize that the elimination of mobile classrooms in our district was one of the highest priorities in every conversation we've had. Those mobiles, well, as I said earlier, were put up in 2007 because of the increase in enrollment at the middle school level. We currently have eight classrooms at this building, eight at station, and the kids are in and out every day. I will tell you, a day like today, in fact, I was talking with Travis about it when we came in, this was questionable today whether we had the kids in and out. You know, we always have very cold days or high wind days or any type of unique scenarios like that. And we've had a lot of them this winter. You know, it creates instructional problems for us and really, we can't have the kids outside when it's below zero, as it was this morning. And it does create, you know, unique, you know, challenges for us. We can't keep them warm. They're trailers, they've got open space underneath, we put the skirt around them, but they're on wheels. That's what they are. And they've been that way since 2007. So we've used them 12 years. They are beyond their expected life. They are in, we take care of them, but it's time to do something. We got to figure out a permanent solution. So obviously, that is a major issue. We also have mobile classrooms this current school year at Grove Elementary due to enrollment increases and program needs at that building. So again, those would be eliminated as well as part of this, this bond issuance. Traffic flow and improvement. Anybody come here after school start? That's why we set 9:30 this morning instead of 9:00. If you're ever trying to go down Dundee Road out here at dismissal or arrival time, you can see this school is one of the most challenging traffic flow parking issues anywhere in the district. I've said this to staff and other community groups, we do not have a good situation at any of our campuses, any of them. Parking and traffic around all of our campuses is very challenging and an issue. And it's a safety issue. And we spend a significant amount of time on a regular basis trying to improve that. But our architects have recommended some solutions for us at each one of the campuses. And those are all identified as part of this plan. Exterior building security enhancements. This is also another major improvement recently, I would say recently or the past 10 years or so, because of the tragedies that happen in schools. We're looking at opportunities to try and improve and harden our facilities on the outside. Some buildings are better than others. For instance, when you came in here today, this one is designed pretty well where you've got a man trap or you, you're kind of isolated. You have to check in, you have to badge. We've got significant protocols like that in most of our buildings. Some of them, that is not the case. And like at the high school level, if you've ever been to the high school, we don't have that. We don't have that building. We don't, we staff it, we do the best we can there, but it is not an appropriate situation. We want to rectify that. There's other schools that are, some are better than others. One other key thing with this one is, I use this example, you know how many, whenever you go to Walmart or to Jewel, you see those large concrete pillars out front, you know, to keep traffic away from the storefront entrances? None of our schools have those. And our architects have recommended that for each of the buildings, like right out front here, where you would put them along the curb to avoid any type of traffic situation. In fact, a couple of years ago, we had a near mess situation with a person that drove up through the station front entrance and crashed into the building. And it's just unfortunate those things happen. So we made some recommendations to make sure our buildings are more safe and secure. Finally, upgrades on the inside. This is also, there's been a significant amount of improvements over the years in schools. Large public facilities, again, were not originally designed 20, 25, 30, 40 years ago based on the information and knowledge we have today in this particular area. We've got a lot of new technologies that our architects have recommended. We would love to be able to install those in each of our schools for safety and security purposes. Again, I don't go into huge detail on those because then you don't share all the security measures you put in. And because they're, they're not secure, right? Then there's ways to get around them. So we've got a lot of opportunities. The board has talked about that in closed session, about some of those enhancements that we would be able to improve in our school facilities. We would definitely upgrade our cameras. And one of the largest things in our, that we would do is to be able to compartmentalize our schools. Some of the takeaways from the most recent school tragedies is, once you get inside the building, like here, come into Prairie this morning, once you get in, you could really go anywhere in this building. There's, we have no physical way to isolate or compartmentalize and lock down particular areas once you're in the door. Okay? That is one of the most significant improvements for the high school and the two middle schools, the two largest buildings. Some opportunities would exist at the elementary schools, but again, those facilities are smaller and have, don't have as many opportunities to do that. But at the middle school and high school level, absolutely be able to compartmentalize and lock down, have movable doors, quickly be able to secure the building in case of some type of breach. So that's a, the safety and security is a huge priority. Any comments from the board?
Just a couple of quick comments. When we talk about needs versus, when we talk about needs versus wants, this clearly came out as a need. I mean, the board has thought for, I think, for a long time. Given the current expectations for school security and the age of our buildings, a significant investment that needs to go in to get our buildings to kind of current thinking of standards for safety and security. As Brian mentioned, we've, we've had sessions with our architects where we've looked at different approaches, different technologies. Where we don't talk publicly about it. But the result of those closed session conversations resulted in the plan, right? And when our architects, they actually went through all of our 1.5 million square feet of buildings, right? And determined each building kind of what we would do. The numbers add up pretty significantly in every community conversation we've had, not just at the board level, but at the community level. This is like the number one priority. Now, part of the elimination of the mobiles, I want to pick up on one of the questions that was mentioned about enrollment, right? And kind of what our current enrollment status is. Before we embarked on our master facility planning, we re-engaged the demographer we used to generate some projections. The projections for the most part are flat, right, for the next 10, 15, 20 years. I'd say flat to maybe declining a little bit, right? And so what does that mean for our schools? You know, I mean, let's just look historically. Even with some of the softening that we've seen recently, you know, the high school is still within 10% of its all-time peak. Right? You're talking about going from 3250 to 2950 in enrollment. It hasn't softened that much. At the middle school, we're starting to see a little bit of a softening. But the reason we have mobiles at the middle schools, right, is because these buildings were designed for like 750, 800 students. Yet we've got like 1,000 students in each building, right? So even with a little bit of a softening of enrollment at middle school, without any kind of funds to put classrooms attached to the building, we would have to keep doing the mobiles, which, which, you know, a lot of our parents and I'd say board members have security concerns about. At the elementary level, some of the softening that we've seen at the elementary level probably does give us some flexibility. It's enabled us to add programming, like the optional full-day kindergarten program because we now have space for it. And we've been able to keep our class sizes a little bit lower, which we believe is kind of a core value that our parents have, have asked us to try to pursue. You guys want to add anything?
The only other thing I will comment on as well, and just before I move on, Brian mentioned, you know, enrollment. Somebody asked a question about the Hoffman Estates development. So the answer is no. We did not do any type of adding classroom space or building space for a proposed development. You know, that was one question I just want to make sure I answer that. You know, we would have to deal with that issue as it comes. Currently, there's no plans, you know, currently in the works. There is a proposed development around the former AT&amp;T call center, but nothing's happened as of yet. So we don't have the details on that. We don't estimate a huge amount of students out of that particular area. We believe we'd be able to absorb that just fine in our current space. So let's move on to the second one. Updating our classroom, preparing students for success. Again, it was real important to make sure no matter what we did with our bond issuance here and capital improvements, that we have an impact on student learning in the classrooms. One of the most important issues that came out of all these conversations with staff across the district was our current furniture is getting in the way of instruction. Okay? There's physically nothing wrong with some of the furniture in our classrooms, but it looks like it did when most of us were in school. Today, instruction is completely different. We have a device in every kid's hands. We've got a completely different pedagogy going on than when all of us were in school. I'm in those classrooms every day. I see what's happening. Teachers do workarounds. And in fact, if you're able to stay a little bit here after school today, or I'm sorry, after this meeting today, you'll be able to visit one of our classrooms here in this building that has some of that new furniture that gives teachers immediate flexibility within the instructional environment to pivot and work in whole group instruction, small group instruction, to meet the individual needs of the kids and what's going on. It's different. Things are changing just like in the workplaces they are in our classrooms. And we want to be able to have that immediate instructional impact. There's a great video on the website. I'd encourage you to take a look at it and hear the teachers talk about it and see some real specific firsthand experiences about opportunities. The next two items here are related directly to the elementary level. We know that we need room, dedicated space in each one of our elementary buildings for the STEM program. This has been a new program that we've introduced over the last several years. We've phased it in. Currently, what we have done, we've kind of shoehorned it in in each building. So through our furniture purchases and through some of our renovation dollars that we have assigned to each building, we need to be able to determine an appropriate and permanent space for that program. Some of them are in the elementary, in the libraries, some are in a half-classroom. We created spaces in different locations. So in every school, it's different spots. We have to be able to create a dedicated space for science, technology, engineering, math at that level. All right? And finally, at the elementary level, the classroom space to support students with sensory and timeout types of opportunities. At that level right now, it goes on, but it goes on in the principal's office and nurse's office in the hallways and inappropriate spaces. We have a, this is directly related to students with special needs. However, any student at any given time during the school day periodically needs time to refocus, realign, and get back on track. And, and we have a significant amount of unique mental health issues that go on. If you ever look at any of the current information about what's happening in our schools, that is the most pressing issue at any K-12 school right now, is helping students adjust to their daily challenges. And our staff deals with this every day. So we know we need to have a dedicated space in each building to be able to redrive students and get them back into the regular ed, in a regular classroom environment as soon as possible. And finally, at the high school level, the largest classroom space at that level is with our PE of this school, PE and wellness, physical education and wellness classrooms. The space for, for that instruction going on at Barrington High School has not changed since 1980. And we've added 1,000 students to the enrollment since that time, and we've been dealing with it ever since. The challenge is, we have over 50 students in every PE class each day at the high school. And it's for one reason. It's because we don't have enough space to actually carry out the curriculum we're trying to do. And here's the other unique component. We have evolved the instruction of what's going on in physical education and wellness at that level. It's lifetime fitness oriented. It's about personal wellness, about your daily cardio, your daily workouts and things like that. Being able to take care of yourself in a, in a healthy and appropriate way as an adult. That's the focus. It's not roll out the ball PE like a lot of us experienced when we were at that level. We do some of that that goes on. It does happen, but some kids choose to go into that particular course if they choose that, that class. But in general, it is a lifetime fitness focus and therefore, we need the appropriate spaces to be able to do it. Now, that addition would be on the back of the building, but it also has a dual purpose I'll talk about in a minute, which has to do with the extracurricular in sports and athletics as well.
Did we want to add anything to that? Oh, my chaplain did came. Another board member. You guys want to add anything? Here, let me just say one. I want to point out in this area, if you go look at the master facility plan, you'll see a lot of planning that went into, in this area, to create kind of different education spaces and some large group instruction spaces in all of our buildings. We heard that pretty clearly from teachers who felt that kind of rows of desks in kind of the existing structure, you know, of kind of the same size classrooms was getting in the way of them delivering the curriculum. Right? So they requested, you know, some larger group instruction spaces, some smaller group instruction spaces. It's all in our master plan. When we got down to having to set priorities to try to fit within a budget, one of the areas that we just did not have the funds to do was to create a lot of those large group instruction areas and to create a lot of structural changes in our buildings. So the compromise in this first bullet point, flexible classroom furniture, was to say, if we can't, we don't have the dollars to do major structural changes in responding to the teachers' expressed desire to do something that kind of changed the way they deliver education in the classroom, we put dollars in here for this flexible furniture. And if you haven't seen... And if you haven't seen what that looks like yet in some of the buildings, I understand that Travis will host a little tour after this, and I would encourage you to do it and go and look and see what some of the newer classroom concepts look like. But this kind of really represents in our priority setting one of the significant compromises from the master facility vision we have to what's in this referendum.
Okay, this one's pretty straightforward. Basically, being able to protect the currently, you know, all of our buildings and update them from a mechanical standpoint. 60 million of the 185 is in this category right here across the district. It is significant. I have a 30-year-old house. A lot of you have either had one or you're hearing that. What do you do in the 30-year-old house? You place a roof? You do the plumbing? You place a furnace, the air conditioner, all those things? I know how it goes. A lot of you have been there or you're going to experience it real soon. This is what's going on in our buildings. And this is Prairie's roof, this building right here. This is considered one of the newest buildings in the district. Built in 1991, opened in '92, it's coming up on 30 years old. Okay? So therefore, you can see significant original equipment at this building. That's the original HVAC system on the roof. We have a large lineup in the budget for this building. It's coming up on 30 years. It needs attention to be able to protect that investment. Barrington High School's our oldest core building in the district. The core of that building was built in 1948. We have major plumbing and electrical issues in the core part of that building. It has to be addressed, a significant line item as well in this budget.
Joe has sat on our facilities committee at the board level for the last eight years. He has thoughts.
So during the past eight years, we've taken a look, a hard look. I mean, we didn't wait for the architects two years ago to, you know, start the process. We typically budget between $2.5 and $3 million to the dozen buildings and grounds that we maintain. That sounds like a lot of money, but it's not. I mean, basically, what we do is instead of redoing a roof, we patch leaks. We don't want water coming down on kids' heads. We're not putting garbage cans in hallways, so we tend to do the maintenance that we can. We repair parking lots, but there are 16 overhead handlers at station alone, each that need to be replaced. They're each $250,000. So there was a question that kind of hinted toward, oh, you know, what happens if, you know, we don't pass it? What do my taxes look like then? Or, I mean, the more fundamental question for somebody that's really concerned with the facilities, even though my kids will not benefit from what we're doing, is what happens to our investment? Because a lot of the stuff that we're talking about in this needs-based referendum is fixing things or replacing things that are just at the end of their useful life. We have some air handling units on some of our buildings where we can't get the parts, so we take one of the units off, we'll replace it, and we'll salvage that one for parts with the other ones to try to maintain and keep the ones that are up there still running. Luckily, we have a great maintenance staff that helps us to do that, but there's only so much of that gadget repair that you can do before you come to the end of the line for a particular building. So there's a lot of nuts and bolts that are going into this that I love the way Brian started things by talking about. There were a lot of things that we wanted to do for our kids, and you just have to let that passion go at some point because you can't get to 600 million. Most of the stuff that you're going to look at when we get to the, you know, the other line items are going to be the development of things that are needs-based.
Any other board members? The only other thing I would add, in the priority setting, we actually didn't shrink the safety and security piece, or we didn't shrink this very much, right? I mean, I think the board's priority going into this process for safety and security and protecting the community's investment in our buildings first. Of the 185 million dollars, 80 million of that is represented by safety, security, and facilities, facilities maintenance issues.
The last priority the board landed on when we had these discussions was to focus on the educational spaces for arts and athletics at the high school level. Again, we have identified needs at every level, but again, the high school rose to the top as the highest priority for a couple of different reasons. And it really boils down to the educational as well as the community spaces. Barrington High School gets used all the time, constantly, on weekends, by the community, as well as for educational purposes. So it really broke into two different areas. First, the arts, and then athletics. Let's talk about the arts for just a minute. The high school auditorium back in 1998 was on the list to be updated and renovated at that time. Ran out of money at that time, and basically did not do it. There's a long story behind that, but essentially, that's why it got deferred. And 20 years later, here we are, we're still there with the significant need to update and renovate the appropriate spaces for our fine arts programs. That room in itself is the highest-used room of any space in the school district. 360 out of 365 days a year, there are at least one to three activities going on in that space constantly. It is the number-one use space. It's the highest community use of any other space we have in the school district. So therefore, there is no other space like that in the school district or in the community. So therefore, the board determined that with the existing space, we needed to renovate that area and repurpose it into some type of appropriate rehearsal or studio types of needs to meet the programming issues at that level and to add an 800-seat auditorium onto the front of the school in the concept. If you look on the website, you will see that as an addition. It's a major addition at that level to meet those instructional and community needs. The second component is the athletic and not only the renovations, but also the dual purpose that I already mentioned for the educational needs during the school day, for the after-school sports and activities. That campus is pretty significant, and when you go on a campus, if you're going to update the traffic law, if you're going to update, you know, add a large addition, you have to look at the whole thing. It's kind of like wallpaper in your house. You can't just do one room. You got to do the whole thing, all right? It never will be right. It will not look, you know, appropriate. So what the board realized when we started these conversations, that that entire campus needed to be adjusted all at one time, which includes all of these spaces. We have a proposal to redirect the traffic flow, to use the space now that we own on the west side of Hart Road. Over the last several years, the board's acquired that property from Lake Hook all the way up to the Hamilton Building. So we own that property currently. We just mow it twice a year. We'd like to be able to use it, and that's a big piece of adding on to our campus area at this referendum. The south part of that district was to add a parking lot, a large parking lot, as well as a multipurpose field turf space for soccer, lacrosse, baseball, softball, any type of outdoor activities. At the north end of the property is a relocation of one of our baseball diamonds, as well as another additional parking lot. And we'd have foot bridges, pedestrian crossways, and two locations at the north end and the south end. Again, those are all identified in the concept plans, where we'd be able to have a safe, you know, back and forth between across Hart Road, and those are also critically important to utilize that space. The conservation area right in the middle, we've had plans that we're currently working on over the next several years internally to use that space for K-12 instruction. That is not included in the bond issuance here, but we'd like to develop that along with this using existing district resources and contributions by some of the local conservation groups in the community to help us incorporate that space into our everyday use as well. I think it's also important to understand that some of the renovations that's going on, the Field of Dreams. Everybody in here have been on the Field of Dreams? You know what I'm talking about. If you lived here, you had your kids in any of those programs, since 1989, that space was built and dedicated by this community, and it's way tighter. It has been incredible for a long, long period of time, but it needs significant attention, especially that core building, major electrical plumbing and facility issues with that. We've also been looking to update and renovate a lot of the core facilities around it. The high school press box is another one that is way past its expected life and needs and needs to be tore down and rebuilt and appropriated. Those are a couple of the larger facilities, whenever we talk about renovations, that are included in this budget as well. So this is, again, another major piece at the high school campus, and it's all incorporated to improving the traffic flow, the parking, these spaces for fine arts and athletics, all together in one renovation and upgrade. Any board members want to comment on this?
This is probably the area that when I'm talking to community members, I get the most questions, do you really need this, right? Or is this just you want to have it, right? Anybody familiar with the facilities themselves, right? Particularly when you compare it to the stadium that we renovated 10 years ago and the amount of use that that facility gets because of the turf that it has? We certainly, from an athletic perspective, would understand, right? Because we've got kids coming in early in the morning, staying late at night, because we just don't have enough physical spaces for all of the teams. And one of the things that this board and this district has focused on for a long time is the social, emotional health of kids. In clubs, activities, athletics, we see this as a critical extension of the classroom. You know, we're privileged as board members to see a lot of the kids who earn academic honors come through our board meetings, right? And whenever we ask them about their memories, right, it's usually either about a teacher and/or the activities and the friendships they made, right? So every study has shown that kids that are engaged in their school through activities and athletics do better academically. We take this commitment pretty seriously to the kids. We think that these facilities fit within that academic scope. In addition, the conversations that we've had with youth community groups in fine arts and athletics in terms of being able to provide them access to some of these spaces for youth groups is really a vital part of us continuing to have our school facilities and the community investment in schools also help our youth activities in fine arts and sports. So we do, I think, the board in the final analysis, we saw this as a critical need.
One of the things that I learned when we heard from the high school coaches was the number of injuries that occurred on fields not during games, but even during practices because of the, of the way the fields are today. So improving and adding turf would also remedy a lot of injuries that are present today. How do you view this?
Here's just a major list of some of the largest ticket items that are included in the 185 million. Already talked about almost all of these on here at one point or another over the last several minutes. The one I haven't talked about is kitchens and cafeterias, so I'd like to spend a couple of minutes on that. As we went out over the last couple of years and talked with staff and with parents and students on this topic, this is the topic that came up repeatedly, is to update our kitchens and cafeterias and also improve the food service, okay? We serve a significant amount of food on a daily basis. We serve breakfast at all of our buildings in the morning for those students that choose to participate, adults who participate, and also lunch. So we have a significant amount of food service that goes on. And our kitchens and cafeterias needs renovations. We have line items in each budget for every building to upgrade those facilities. We also ironically are right now in the process of going out for a new food service bid, and we've done some different things to hopefully address the issues of quality and support in that area as well, but we need the space. Lots of times, our vendor will tell us we don't have the appropriate spaces or the right things to meet the needs of some of the things we want to do. So we'd like to be able to do those simultaneously and improve the quality of food service at all of our schools across the district. So again, these are some of the larger items that are identified in each one of the spaces.
Right?
Yeah.
We'll go back to that one.
Yeah.
Put on the second bullet from the bottom. Could we add Prairie? Second bullet.
Just for today.
I believe, even though we have parameters on how we spend this money, there's some flexibility. Is that correct?
Mike is a current parent here at Prairie and either calls me or texts me periodically whenever there's a long challenge in the line here at this building. This is one of the most compromised sites we have. This in the high school or the two words, in my opinion, across the district. Depends on the day, but this one is a daily challenge here on this site. We've had discussions at the board level about this particular campus. It is interesting, one of the solutions we would like to pursue has to do with this house sitting right out here that is currently owned by the Barrington Countryside Fire Department, and, you know, we're obviously trying to pursue that as well. We're involved and disagree with them now about the long-term use of that property. So we believe that a major solution for this campus and this site would be to be able to have access to that space, to be able to, you know, use that as well. But Prairie is, we're very limited here with some of the grounds, with water retention and so on, to be able to try and deal with the site problems. Dundee Road out here has no shoulder, and it's very, very difficult to be able to, you know, manage traffic. We work with our first responders, with Barrington Police Department on a daily basis to try and do this better. I know I'm looking at Travis back there. You're every day, right? There's some type of traffic congestion and challenges on this site. But we've got that, as I said, at each one of the sites, and we've got solutions for the others that we believe are feasible. Those will take time to work with our local units of government and work through those, and our engineers should determine the appropriate ways to rectify that. But Prairie is definitely on the list, Mike. We've got to be able to figure out a better solution for this site.
And I don't mean to give you a hard time. I just, I wonder why it's not there, though? You know, it's still subject to the same DOT, you know, questions that the other improvements are. And I did park in a non-parking spot today next to that house, so that would be great if we have access to that, but we may not.
We may not.
I think, have we not, we have some ideas and some solutions if we don't get that additional space?
Well, Mike, the reason why, as you know, when included, the board knows this as well, that we don't have a real solution for this site. That's why we didn't include it here. We will pursue any solution that becomes available when it becomes available, be able to deal with this.
And could we have user's referendum money for that?
Well, it'll depend. We could. It'll depend on how, when the bids go out, when they come back ass and all those types of things.
Because the summer project money is pretty expensive.
To use some combination of all of the above when the opportunity presents itself.
I just wanted to give a little additional explanation as far as the cafeterias and food preparation. So we went into each of the schools and talked to parents, teachers, and kids as well as far as what were the, sorry, I'm losing my voice. I'm trying to put germs on this, sorry. As far as what their primary concerns were at each of the schools, and, you know, it's different in every single elementary school. We have neighborhood schools for all of our elementary schools, and they all have different communities and values and, you know, areas that the PTO's like to spend money and et cetera. But the overwhelming majority of all the elementary schools was that the areas we're providing food preparation for children is just very dated and doesn't really live with the good, even though the food is actually FDA compliant, it's meeting all of the regulations that the federal government puts on us. It just, it doesn't taste good. And it's, you know, we've heard it called prison food and all different kinds of things in some of these meetings, but that was the, you know, the impetus behind looking at upgrading some of the facilities so that we could actually cook food at the facilities rather than just, you know, microwaving it and getting it to test. So I just wanted to get a little color to that. And also, with regard to the performing arts area, and Brian may have said this, but I didn't catch it if you did, you know, the high school and community obviously uses it significantly for arts and programming and stuff like that, but, you know, many teachers came in and explained to the board as well that a lot of instruction takes place in the performing arts area. So, you know, with regard to, Brian, that was initial point regarding, you know, looking for large instruction areas and things like this, the performing arts area actually is the primary area in the high school where that type of instruction can still happen. So I just wanted to add a little bit of that.
Let's take a little bit of the money issues, and I know there were a few questions that came up here this morning when people came in. When we take a look at the impact on individual taxpayers in the community, the median home in our community... the median home in our community is $500,000. So on an annual basis, with this referendum passes, that would be estimated increase of approximately $100 a year on the current tax bill for the next 20 years. Okay, let me answer a few of the questions and I'll ask some specifically.
What's the 100 when you allow for the debt to sort of, that's the question that comes up?
Let me explain that, correct.
It's a very common question, I haven't noticed.
Sure. Of the $185 million, okay, if we just backfill those with the debt rolling off, you know, that would be the impact on an annual basis. An increase on the current tax bill, depending on the value of your property, you can see the ratio there. Now, if we did nothing and the bonds roll off in the next two years, there would be a significant decrease in that same $500,000 house. It would be approximately a $700 decrease in the local property taxes.
About 600, 600 decrease, 700 dollars.
Yeah. Okay. So it would be, the point is a significant drop, okay? It would be because the bond debt from the early 2000s, late 90s is being paid off. It's like when your mortgage gets paid off on your house, okay? At some point, you know, then that's done being paid for. And that's coming up here at the end of the levy year of 2021. So therefore, that would be the increase. So with this passing, the total impact would be a $700 payment for an individual with a $500,000 house. But it's not an increase in that, it's an current increase of $100 over the current. Okay? So we would be backfilling 160 of that 185 with the current debt and then adding an additional 25 million on the current debt structure.
And Brian, what is the, what is included in that 25 million? What is the incremental access that you had?
You know, I will tell you, that's where the board had a lot of discussion around this. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to the board here to bed and I'll give you my, you know, where I think what happened. You know, we had a discussion at the board table around, should we just do 160 million to keep it flat, no impact on the current tax bill? But I think there was just so many projects of the board that identified as critical that they wanted to continue to address, you know. I don't know if there was one particular item, I don't recall if the board member wants to weigh in on it. I think it was the whole high school campus was a big part of it. You know, that was one, was a large item. 80, 90 million out of 180 is just at the high school level. So there was, once you start, you couldn't pick and choose some of those projects at the high school level. Once you start doing the whole thing on that campus, that was a major piece. But there were some other items, the kitchens and cafeterias was one of the things. At the end, it was added on, you know, something. But that was direct feedback from the community and from staff. Board members, do you remember? I want for anybody to weigh in on this.
I'll go first then. I think from the beginning of this process, there was always an option to try to keep essentially the referendum question, kind of called tax neutral, right? Kind of the wrong bird, right? It's always been kind of the point we could iterate. Some of us favored actually trying to go lower than that number, right? To create kind of a tax saving for all the taxpayers. There were others on the board that advocated based on needs, right? To go even higher, right? So when we convened the referendum advisory committee, one of the things we asked them to do was try to weigh in on this question from their perspective and representative community, right? And we gave them options that were, you know, as low as like, I think it was 100 million or 110 million dollars, which would create a savings, a tax neutral. And then also one that was like 235, which I think had like a 300 or 400 dollar a year increase to taxpayers. And coming back to the board, right? They asked us, can we carve out our own option? To them, the feeling was if you could keep the increase to $100 a year for that median home, then we could be comfortable with that, right? Now, they had a really interesting debate about this. And I would say that their group kind of came back in the recommendation to us saying we'd like to kind of keep it tax neutral, but if you have to increase it, we're also comfortable going up to $100 a year as an impact on a $500,000 home. The board then essentially engaged in a conversation about, well, okay, how do we feel about this? And I would say that the majority of the board had difficulty cutting it tax neutral because of what was perceived as needs, right? There were some spaces at the high school, particularly around student services, that we felt were critical needs. There were some of the category four that the board felt were critical needs. And I'm trying to remember what else was in there. I think we also added, for instance, the, Brian, you talked about the traffic issues, right? We've got serious traffic issues at four of our elementary buildings, some of which border like, I'll pick North Barrington. Does anybody here from North Barrington? I have a couple, right? But I mean, we have an issue up there, the same kind we have at the countryside, is you have, you have parent and bus traffic on a road where people are traveling 15, 16 miles an hour. This is not safe, right? So we need to create kind of another regress, right? So we added those, right? I know it didn't make it, you know, to the board. We see that, we see some of those traffic and safety improvements as being really important. So those were some of the projects that were kind of at the margin. I will tell you, like in any compromise, and I'm gonna speak for all my colleagues, but I think in any compromise, there was a significant number of community members, board members who were disappointed that we didn't go higher because of their perception of needs, right? And there were probably some community members who felt comfortable at that tax neutral number and didn't want to see the increase of 100, right? And so I think the board deliberated and we ended up kind of at this spot, $185 million with $100 in that.
I think most of us on the board, I actually started out in the 235 bucket because we had already gone from about 600 billion down to 234, I think it was exactly, if you look for, I think. But I sensed a lot of hesitance. And the big worry that I have is, you know, well, if you don't make it something that people can really latch on to and believe in, then you make it nothing. And doing nothing, I felt would be pretty difficult just knowing what I know about our facilities and where they are and what needs to be done. So we wanted to make it manageable for our community, but at the same time, meet the needs of our buildings. I'm a very competitive person, I've been in education my whole life. And so for me, I know what's around the other districts around us and I know what we produce in terms of our kids. Our high school is really a crown jewel in this community and attracts people. Most of us came here because of the education our kids were gonna receive. I am a teacher and brought my kids here for the K-12 education that they have. So for me, even though my kids are all gone, I still value this tremendously and feel like, you know, the investment that we're doing at this level already is kind of bare bones. One of the things that also got added in that wasn't in the 160 was some of the development in the open spaces at the high school. So adding some parking around there, changing the crazy traffic configuration where we won't be driving around the building, which also creates some safety issues from time to time because you're coming around that blind corner and so on. And so all of that will be eliminated. And if you look at the plans online, you'll see a much better comprehensive plan for dealing with the number of cars that we have around that building on an hourly basis, really.
Breaking this down, you know, some people need a little more clarity on a personal impact. You know, again, that $100 per year could be less than $2 a week or 27 cents a day. This doesn't resonate with some, it resonates with a lot of people significantly. Gives you a more closer daily impact. This slide here is probably one of the most important ones for taxpayers to understand. And this is the actual tax rates that are levied by school districts here, us. You see us right here, as well as all of the other districts around us in the west suburban, northwest suburban, north suburban area. Every district that we compare ourselves to. We are a K-12 district. Our current tax rate on the tax bill is 4.559%. That's what your property is taxed at for a K-12 education, the actual percentage. You can see this list where we rank. We are the lowest in any of these districts that we compare ourselves to in our educational tax rate. Some of the districts on here are K-12, like Lake Zurich, Warrenville, Naperville, St. Charles. Those are also K-12 districts, in other words, that's the rate they levy as well. These others are blended districts. In other words, you have a high school district and then you have the elementary district. So you add the two tax rates together. For example, the highest on here is 7.584%, high school district 214, and living in the Wheeling 21 school district. That's what they tax the property at, the actual rate. So we have an extremely low tax rate and that's intentional. The boards of education have chosen to do that over the years. This community has only approved those levies up to that point until the board, you know, issues that levy each year. Even if this referendum passes on April 2nd, it will go up to 4.615 estimated, right there. We will still be the lowest on this list. Elmer's back in November passed a $140 million referendum, so they're gonna bump up about three spots because they don't have retirement debt there and it's an add. And so we will still be the lowest in tax rate anywhere in the suburban area.
Brian, if you redid that chart, I don't find that one very meaningful. If you redid the chart and had revenue per student, revenue per household, something. What would Barrington?
If you look on our school report card, there is how much we spend per student. We didn't do it by, we hadn't done it by household, I'm not sure about that, but how much we spend per student, we're, yeah, I'll have Brian talk. We would, with this group rating, we'd be somewhere in the middle, right? About the middle of how much we spend per kid.
Yeah, so let's be, but this group is, right? This is what we commonly refer to as the Barrington 220 reference group, right? So it's the districts that have a kind of geographical proximity to us as well as other high-performing suburban districts, right? That have the same kind of academic expectations that we have in 220. If you were to compare, we have done it in the past, comparing kind of the dollars per student in the tax rate. We were in the lower third on this list. There is a, there's a, is part of the new state funding formula, right? There's this concept of adequacy, which is kind of a minimum funding level that's expected for an adequate district, right? And kind of our cost, when you compare it to that, is, I think, what our last, last year we were 110 or 1, what was the number?
109.
109, right? So we were only 9% spending, only 9% above what's considered kind of just adequate, right? So our spending for students is pretty reasonable. Is that, somebody's got a chart.
That's on your website.
Okay, that's the level of it for half?
I knew we were about in the middle.
Yeah.
I think, Mike, Brian, if, you know, it's not to say...
So if you can, yeah, so if you can see, this is, the blue bars represent that dollar per student and the red bar is us in Barrington.
It's not to say this is a bad idea and I don't support it. It's to say it's being presented as 100 when the article is 700 and we fund in line, we're not the bottom. It may still be a good thing to do, it just feels the way it's being presented is not completely impartial. I'm not, it's not, I'm against the proposal. It just feels like the presentation is, isn't a self-pick.
Okay, let me give you clarity, Brian said this wrong. It's not meant to be, right? We are up here impartially, right? And I will tell you, as taxpayers, right? My view, this is just my own personal view, any referendum question, the answer should be no, right? Unless you feel that there's a compelling reason to vote yes, right? So I think we've had several conversations as board members, and I'm sure the administration, with some of our friends and neighbors who support this and some of our friends and neighbors that don't support it, right? As board members, we are here today just to try to share with you information on what it is and the process and how we got it, right? If, there's plenty of room in all of these issues, always for reasonable people to disagree, right? So if you're not comfortable with, you know, the content of this and it doesn't make sense to you, that's not in a reasonable position, right? We all, as Americans, we have in our DNA, right? We don't like taxes, right? So, but if, so then our only purpose here is not to advocate for or against. By law, we're not allowed to, right? By law, we as board members are impartial. So if it's coming across anything other than informational and the process and what the board used to get here, we apologize, right? But we are clearly just here to provide information, not advocate for or against.
Follow up on the comment there as well. At Barrington, we value transparency a lot. And I appreciate the comments that you made about, you know, how the, you know, the total cost is around $700 for a $500,000 home of the others. But the only information you see on a cost that is publicized and is on the website and things like that are all the incremental change that it passes, not the incremental change that it doesn't pass. And I think the community would be expecting there to be a, you know, some information about what the total cost for a $500,000 home would be. If that's the metric, that's the level you want to use. I mean, there's a, there's a school district just in northern here that had a bond issue recently and had said, vote for this bond issue and your taxes will go down, you know? And I just can't imagine that kind of message being accepted by the community here, you know? And I think that you would do yourselves and the clarity for the community a world of service by publicizing the $700 figure, the $600, the total $700, and the incremental $100 figure. And I think that a lot of people would look at that and say, well, they're being pretty clear here about what's happening.
Yeah, I think it is on the FBC. I mean, we agree with you. You're referring to the Lake Zurich. Let us go back over any more, man. We, yeah, I will. I mean, they're friends of mine, I said the same thing to them, right? So we'll go back through our materials if that isn't clear. We've been trying to be very clear, the very first meeting we had, we talked about that. We're not trying, so we'll try to be clearer if that isn't as clear as it is now. And I also want to, so to your, but to your point, right? If it doesn't pass, right? What's the impact on the school? I mean, we've already told you what the impact is on a taxpayer, right? Understand that, you know, as taxpayers, right? Our tax rate at 4.5 is only made up a little bit of the capital bonds that are used for facilities. Most of it is obviously just operating costs, sure, right? So that doesn't change. The only thing in question here, right, is whether we're gonna issue you bonds for facilities, right? So if that doesn't happen, right? Then none of the projects that we've talked about will happen. The school's gonna continue to go, we've still got, we've still gotta do school, as we say every day, right? And we're still gonna try to provide, you know, the best education for the community's children that we can. And it just means that, you know, all of the facilities, you know, it's just, you know, just won't get done.
Right, the question will be, did the board overshoot with $185, you know, or not? Because a lot of these things, people are pretty sure of maintenance and security and things like that and, you know, maybe, maybe all of us will pass, we'll kind of see.
And I think that's right. If people feel that there's too much in the 185, right? And it's fluff and it's not needed, I would expect them to vote no. I would agree with that.
So just to be clear, though, if we're gonna talk about total amounts of money, the current bonds retire at, in 2021?
Yeah, they kind of phase out over two years, but yeah, by 21.
So there would be some savings over the next year and then the, for the $100,000, the 600 decrease by 2021. the 600 decrease by 2021?
It would be over a couple of years. Be over a couple of years.
And I, and I just want to be clear, a legal disclaimer, right, whenever time we talk about taxes and increases up and down, right? So for instance, let's take that 600 number, right? Now, I can tell you, the one thing that I can calculate today with accuracy is the $100 impact, right? That's actually easy to calculate.
It's more than that.
Right? The, the, the other numbers, as a legal disclaimer, have a kind of a plus or minus 20% number to them, and should not be interpreted as your individual tax bill, right? There are a lot of factors outside of the district's control that affect your individual tax bill, right? Whether you add it on, depending on the county you're in, and how the Illinois Department of Revenue allocates burdens among the four counties, our 220 tax bills are more complicated. So there's always a disclaimer. I don't want anybody to say, you said there'd be a $600 decrease in my bill. There's a lot of factors if they make that 500 or 700, right? So we got to think of a, I want to make sure we all...
This is the debt service.
Yeah.
It's for the debt service.
Right, right. It's just the ballpark, because, yeah. Did you have?
Well, I just wanted to make that point or clarification that this doesn't, this isn't a line in the sand where April 3rd, everything falls down...
Correct, correct.
And April 3rd, everything bumps up. I mean, there will be, there will be an incremental increase to what we're already paying.
Right, so what would happen, right? I mean, you're right, if, if the referendum is not passed, I mean, second, right, we're still going to pay our bills, we'll see that impact come down over a period of time.
Couple of years.
Right? If the referendum passes, right, the work to do the 185 million dollar scope is easily going to take three or four years, right? In terms of engineering and planning and all that. So the board will have to figure out how to tranch that out and the funding of that to try to match up with the construction schedule. I can't speak, none of us can speak for future boards. We can just tell you in the past, boards have tried to keep the tax service level to the community so there wouldn't be any big surprises. And even if you tranch it out over three years, you know, the board will have at least one option, right, to structure all of those bonds so that the cumulative effect, right, of that $100 increase would be level for a few years. But that would be a, that would be a future decision in the board.
Can I just go back to the original point? During your planning, how has it been affecting ADA accommodations as the buildings are being changed and these buildings certainly don't meet common standards? And has that been figured into your budget and how you know plan on working those items?
We can't hear the question.
Yeah, so the question was, as we go through the projects, how would it affect the ADA compliance in some of the buildings, particularly those of our older buildings that may not be fully ADA compliant today?
And has that been planned?
And has that been planned, right? You want to?
I will. The quick answer is yes, in every single scenario. Here's the way ADA compliance works with public facilities like our schools. We are grandfathered as long as we don't touch them. Once we touch them, in every one of these scenarios, then we have to meet those, those new rules and regs for ADA compliance. Marriages with disabilities act, if you might not know what the ADA is, okay? For example, all of our washrooms. We have significant dollars in each of our schools to upgrade and improve the washrooms. We have some washrooms currently at Grove Elementary that I can barely get in and turn around in and turn back around. I mean, they're built in 1958 and not appropriate. Anybody with any type of, you know, physical issue at all can't use them. I'm just giving you one example. The, the high school auditorium, the pitch and the, and the length of that, it's so unacceptable. I watched it, I was there a week ago Sunday for the musical, and I saw several senior citizens in the community that were there, they loved the Matt and Hey Show on Sunday afternoon, and they couldn't get up and down the aisle. I mean, had to have assistance just to walk down because the pitch was 1948 standards, not 2019. And so therefore, now, once we touch it, we have to make sure that's all appropriate. I'm just giving you a couple of examples. So we will meet with our, our architects and engineers, have to sign off all that. Anytime we touch any of these renovations, we have to do that. Okay, good question.
Does the board see the condition of the current facilities in District 220 stacking up against these other communities?
Before we jump in.
So anytime you're on the ball field or you're at the auditorium, everybody always has, makes a lot of comments about, oh, I was, I'll use Lake Zurich again, for example, with the, both athletic and arts, right? I got, I was at the high school Sunday, yesterday, and I heard people just rattling off different districts that have better facilities than ours. It's, it's not hard to do. So there's a lot of comparison, a lot of talk in the community about where we stack up, and it's, it's not as adequate as others' for both performing and athletic.
Yeah, I was, I was going to mention a couple of things about classroom spaces. So one of the things that Brian had mentioned, Brian Battle had mentioned earlier, that we, we chose to look at as, you know, a really want to have but probably can't get there are the flexible learning spaces, the collapsible walls, and all of the things to expand and contract the areas where kids are learning. We, there are a lot of schools in the surrounding area that have those spaces already. We've been able to go and see what they look like and see them with kids in them and so on. And so there are still, even at the 185 level, going to be some things that we just said, well, you know what? You can only write off so much at a time. There are things that are not going to happen in this plan because we do have a 72-square-mile school district, we do have 12 buildings, there's a lot of responsibilities. And just the security stuff alone, you know, is $8 million. That's already a big chunk of the money. We did not have the educational dollars to spend to necessarily get level. But we feel like with the quality staff that we have and the support the kids have in our homes, that we still have an incredibly high-functioning and high-performing school district, and we'll, you know, we're going to move forward in a good way.
I'll just add two quick comments. Education has changed significantly in the last 10 to 15 years. Instructional technology, the use of tablets and laptops and other instructional technologies in the classroom has transformed the delivery of education in ways that are faster than probably any other 10-year period of time, right, in education. And, and facilities unfortunately haven't kept up. So as Joe said, we actually sent our administrators and board members, when we were doing the master facility plan, we went out and looked at other facilities in the Chicagoland area, new facilities elsewhere. New schools that are being built are so different than old schools, right? It's just, the way it is is instructional technology. And, you know, we know we're limited, we can't do all of that, not, right? But we're going to try to do as much as we can to keep the delivery of our education relevant. But I will tell you, it has been the fine arts parents and the athletic parents that go out and with their kids, go and look at other school facilities, and come back to the board and say, how come we don't have facilities for our community's children that is like that, right? And that's where those are the conversations that we as a board, I'll give you an example with fine arts, they came to us probably eight to 10 years ago and said, you know, we'd like to redo the whole fine arts wing, the facility. The board came, he said, absolutely, so we're going to go out and get private funds to do it all. He said, we're right there with you, right? They went out and tried to do it, and they realized very quickly that the budget and what the appetite was for fundraising were very different, right? So that effort, while sincere on their part, and they were very hard to do that, it's just not possible. We can use private funds to try to help our facilities kind of enlarge, right, to make it a little bit better. But, you know, it's not enough to do the kind of work at the scale that we're talking about with these projects. And the other thing, 10 years ago, when we put in turf in our football field, you know, even we were a little bit, you know, we were ahead of the curve, and people were saying, oh, you don't need that, that's a nice to have, right? I will tell you today, for both safety purposes, scheduling and use purposes, everyone understands that turf fields provide the most cost-effective way to, to meet the needs of our students in our schools. But even at that, you know, in our, in our, even in our plan, significant improvements in those areas of the middle schools did not make a difference.
Couple of points just to clarify. The, you did not hear us mention at the high school, a lot of our athletic stadium, nothing in the stadiums included in this, because that was done, you know, back in 2007, 2008, and Brian just referenced that. So the stadium's fine, it's right where it's at, and we're, we're paying for the replacement of the turf coming up, but that's about the operating, that's not part of the referendum here, okay? We saved for that, there was a need, we knew we had to address, and we remember paying for that, okay? We accepted that that was part of the deal 10 years ago when that was put in, okay? It's not, it's not here, I didn't talk about it, it's not part of it, okay? The second thing is, as we are having these conversations, which they're pretty much happening daily now, we are updating the FAQ on our website. So that whole point about the taxing, we've updated, the print version isn't updated. We've got an update after today, we'll probably update a couple of the other questions based on what I'm hearing here to make sure community members understand, you know, all the details. So if you go and look at that FAQ on the website, it's updated with the detailed information. Okay, question?
So you have really less than 30 days to vote. And to be fair, you know, you're a parent active and you're in the school. I have an educated school for 10 years. They're all grown up. But I care because I live in Barrington, and education is key to our children's future and our, the future of our community. So what about, how are you reaching out to the parents or the community that you don't connect to, I mean, now? How do you connect to them with the parents who aren't in the Barrington area? You know, you have to, you have to do more outreach in terms of house, house or community, community. When we did the referendum that built North Barrington School and Row School, we had a lot of grassroots efforts. And I'm not really seeing that here. You know, I'm a grassroots efforts kind of person, and I'm just not seeing that here. And I hear candidates, I hear candidates running for trustees in the villages that are saying, well, $100 is too much to stay out of my house already. And it's like, but this is your community, and if you don't understand and see the pictures of like air conditioners that are rusting out, or seeing these kids in a day like today going from the building to a trailer, you're not making an impact. You're not making that impact. It's like, they just hear, oh, they want a fancy workout studio, they want a fancy auditorium, they don't, they want clean turf, unless they got injured. Or show the pictures of the senior citizens struggling, going up and down that ramp at the auditorium. You have to hit people visually and then listen, and I don't see that happening. That's all.
I want to comment.
I'm going to reiterate the point of it, the school district cannot advocate for the passage of this, nor will, right? I mean, our job, right, was to put a referendum question to stimulate dialogue within the community, right? I will tell you, we have reached out to, we're trying to do everything we can just on the communication side, not on the advocacy side, but on the communication side, right? Consistent with sessions like this, putting kind of mailers out, putting information on the website. We've got, many of us are going to participate in different Facebook Live sessions to try to respond to questions like what we're doing now. I know there is a community group that is formed to advocate for this, right? But they're independent of the schools. And, you know, our job is just to provide information, answer questions, right? The advocacy has to be up to community members, not the schools. That's not our job.
I'll add to that, that I'm always the one that makes that line great, so, and I know you guys heard that from me before, but Brian is right, we have a legal responsibility to stay out of, you know, we won't go door to door. We don't deliver flyers, that's not part of what we're allowed to do, but we can't answer questions. There were great questions that were challenging questions even, like as to, you know, how did you come up with the number? What do we get for that extra that makes it not tax neutral and so on and so forth? Those are the kinds of things that we're here for, because a lot of people want to know what they're spending their money on, which is totally legitimate. So we can only work within the limits that have been built around us, and, you know, it has to be the community talking to the community. It can't be us going out door to door during any of those things.
And I'll just add one last thing. If there is any community group that would like administrative members or board members to go to any meeting, we've sent this to, reached out to all the villages, all the people that were on the referendum advisory committee that represent different groups in town, and we have said, we're happy to go to any meeting to share information, right? So if anybody has a meeting of any group, whether it's a homeowner's meeting, a neighborhood meeting, some other group, we're happy to go and provide information and answer questions with board members, if that's a good idea.
Hi, so there are some members of the citizens committee here today, and you can talk to them.
It's a big room.
Yeah, it's a big room. I like this room, it's really nice. It is a great room room. Anyway, my name is Leah Colister Lazari. There are a few of us here today from the citizen committee, and we would love to have more jump on board with us to get the word out because we're, we need a lot of help. So yeah, we'll be in the back. Sam Oliver is here, you wave. John Walschinsky is here, you wave. Anybody else that I'm missing? Yes?
Carol.
Carol, what's your last name?
Beer Lanning.
Carol Beer Lanning. So catch any of us afterwards in the back, and we will share contact info and go.
And if this does go on pass, what is the school committee's next step?
Well, I'll give the quick answer. The next board of education's going to have to navigate that. The next time we could go, we even could go out to the community would be a year from right now. That's the presidential primary in 2020. There is no fall general election, so it'd be in the spring of 2020. So I don't know if any other board members want to. That'd be the next opportunity, but I don't know whether the next board will do that or not.
That basic question. About $60 million of this is repairing the roof, preparing the HVAC conditioner.
60 million.
And you compared it, you compared it to houses, and you said, well, we have a 30-year-old house, you have to replace the roof. I have a house that's about 30 years old. I don't get to open a GoFundMe page to repair my roof. I planned for that in advance, and I saved money for that, I invested for that in advance so that when the need comes, I have money to fix my HVAC, to fix my roof. Why does, why don't the schools do that?
It's a great question. It's a great question. There's a reason.
Why is that?
I love that answer. That's a good question.
It is an awesome question.
Okay, give me a good answer.
I'm going to give you an answer, you can decide to move.
Brian, repeat, repeat the question if you will.
Okay, yeah, so the question is, why, essentially about Barrington, why didn't the district save enough money to accommodate the 185 million dollar question?
Well, the $60 million part...
Or the 80 million part for the saving of Barrington.
That is the repair of the roofs, the rest of the...
Right.
All of which are foreseeable.
Yes.
They're all foreseeable.
Right, so, so I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to answer it from my perspective. It's kind of a fiscal conservative anti-tax kind of guy, right? I do not believe that school districts should be banks of taxpayer money, right? And you saw, we purposely tried to keep our, our tax rate low, right? Now, you could make an argument that we should have tried to go and raise that tax rate so that, you know, let's say we make an extra, you know, we have a surplus balance of 10 or 15 million dollars a year so you can accumulate enough money to pay for these major things, right? And there are some school districts who have, some of whom are on that chart, right? And there are some school districts who have, some of whom are on that chart, right, who have really high tax rates. Right? In my opinion, more money than they know what to do with. So they end up paying their taxes more than, or paying their teachers a lot more than we do. Remember, our teachers at Barrington High School are making 20, 30, 40% less than Palatans. Right? So there are districts who tax a lot, and they have enough money. I'm going to take 211, for example, right? They're proud of the fact that they do all of their, all of their funding, right, without the need for a referendum.
They put a new pool, so that every building.
They put a new pool, right? But, but that just means, and you see the taxes in there, right? Now, we've chosen to keep our tax rates low. We've chosen to put a system in place consistent with the state law that says, anytime that we as a school district need to make a major investment, we got to go back to the community and see permission. Right? The law doesn't give us, as a school board, the ability to make those big jumps, right? We're confined each year to CPI, right, in the tax gap. So in my opinion, it's, it's, it's correct for the school district to present this to the community and let the community decide how they want to fund the schools. This is a great example. They can say yes, they can say no. School district has to react accordingly. Right? And we are one of the full, full, or few school districts that made that, I think we made it first. In our fund balance policy, we have a minimum of 25%, a maximum of 40. Right? If you look at our fund balance policy, it says you get over 40% of your annual expenditures. You know, four, five month kind of, kind of cushion, right? Then the school district has to kind of rebate that back to the taxpayers. We don't allow for board policy, the accumulation of the revenues to do major project. We say, that's a conversation we have to have with our community. Did that answer the question?
That does answer the question.
There was one on the back first. First hand job is in the back.
Is there a big voice or use the mic?
Oh, I don't know. This, this kind of adds on to your question and maybe partially answers it. The 185, is that your total expenditure? Or are there some reserves up to that 40% or 25% we just talked about? So is the spend going to be, I keep hearing it's 235, and that may have been another number that is very contentious, right? But is there some reserves or something else that, so that, you understood my question? We actually spent more than the 185.
Yeah, it's something we can answer. We had an extensive conversation about this, I think, at the board table, right, about our reserve, right? Now, we probably have some limited number. And I, I'm going to put a range on it. You guys can, you know, let's say it's maybe 5 to 8 or 10 million dollars that perhaps we could play with without violating our policies. Right? One of the concerns, or one of the challenges of the forecast that we as a community have in this process is that 185 and those projects, and if you go online, you'll see a list of all the projects that make up 185, right? Those were cost estimates. And that was, it wasn't pulled out of the air. It was, it was generated by proper construction with a lot of knowledge, right? And then they tried to project out cost increases, you know, based on this happening over a period of time. But the reality of how this process works is if the referendum were passed, we know we can issue $185 million of capital bonds. What we don't know is how far that's going to go in a project. Right? Because you've got to go through more detailed engineering. You got to go through, you got to bid it out. Sometimes those bids come in higher than you expect, sometimes lower. And what happens is a future board are going to have to make those priority decisions. Right? About if, if the cost came in higher than estimated, where are you going to sit in priority? What are you going to not do? Right? And, and the example I use for people who've been around a while, right? We approved the referendum of the swimming pool at the high school several times, right? Because it was a big hunk, and every time the bids came in higher, it got, you know, the swimming pool got pushed out to kind of the next referendum back in the nineties. So we've kept, right, a little bit of capital reserve to try to accommodate that process as well as just honestly accommodate any building emergencies that happen. Right? So could we maybe contribute a little bit? Possibly. But I think that would be a decision for, for future boards. It's not enough to put a big debt in 185. We just don't keep that, we don't keep reserves at that high level.
Joe, do you want to comment on that? Yeah, give the example of the high school.
Yeah. Yeah, so being on the facilities committee for a long time and having that $2.5 billion or so to react to issues as they occur in 12 buildings, I can tell you that in, that we have about 8 million, I think 7.8, 7.9 million in the capital projects account, which is, by the way, there's different funding in education for the operational part of things and the capital part. So, and you can't really go back and forth. So in that account, we have some money, but we need a rainy day fund. We had the bridge that connected Field of Dreams to the high school collapsed, and it did so in pretty spectacular fashion, like immediately. So it just went down.
This time of year.
Yeah, it was this time of year. It failed, and you know, that is actually under the Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction. So we had a lot of, you know, permitting and things that we had to do in a certain way. And we had to get a bridge back up for our kids. And that was just one $800,000 example of being able to react to what happens in a community like ours where the weather changes pretty violently from time to time. So, I mean, things are going to happen to our structures, and, you know, we don't like going and asking for additional funding for our day-to-day function. And when something goes down, we have to have the ability to be able to fix things. So we would never, if I, I'm moving on from my school board life, but I will tell you right now, if, for any school board member, they wouldn't want to be without that rainy day fund to be able to react to keeping our buildings safe.
Yeah, thanks. Just one comment on your good question about why we don't budget better for maintenance. We are discussing right now increasing that budget now. Usually we use summer project money, the $2 or $3 million number. It's not a big number for the needs of such a vast district. So we are aware of that, and regardless of referendum, having that conversation.
We currently have 1.5 million square feet of space throughout the school district. So that's pretty significant. Question.
As far as the borrowing costs, how does the debt that's being retired from an interest rate standpoint differ from the debt that's going to be issued? Because I would think from a timing standpoint, we're still relatively low interest rates, especially with AAA bond rating. I would expect that borrowing costs can be quite low right now.
Very question. Yep.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Now, put some numbers to it. The, when the debt was issued in the nineties, a lot of it actually got 5, 6, 7%. The school board actually was able to refinance a lot of those. We had some of it down in like the 3 and 4 range, right? But it's just, there are FERC rates that we would expect are much lower. And just so you know, so kind of that tax neutral number, which is like 160 million in borrowing, that's essentially the same debt service that we issued 150 million dollars of debt in the nineties. So, so we get a little bit more borrowing power that way, right? So we can borrow more money at the same debt service level. The flip side though is since the late nineties, since 2000, construction dollars though, only over 50% is the way. So borrowing costs offset that a little bit.
Do you expect it on that note regarding construction costs? Technology and building materials have also improved. Do you expect the usable life of a lot of these new systems that you're installing to be longer than 30 years in comparison?
Potential. Right? I mean, it's hard.
Maybe.
Yeah. I mean, it just, it just, because we're not building new buildings. We're kind of renovating spaces and all that. So it, it would be, I would have probably afforded people a couple of construction.
We, when we had our, when we had our conversations with the architects and engineers, they actually, you know, obviously their goal is, you know, to modernize things significantly. And, you know, so they started talking to us also about building life and how some of our buildings, the actual structures themselves, were getting close to their, the end of their usable lives because they're like 50 years old and stuff. And again, that was one of the things that didn't make the cut for us because we, we tried to stay within the brick and mortar that we already had up and try to renovate spaces, try to maintain spaces instead of, you know, new structures. But you're, the thing that I worry about is saying, hey, you know, we have more modern stuff. We have more efficient stuff, therefore it'll last longer. Is a lot of the stuff that we're talking about is still exposed to the elements. It's still going to, you know, have a useful life. And if you guys think about cars in general, you know, cars have become a lot more modern. But I don't know about you guys, mine doesn't last much longer than it did when I was buying cars in the eighties. So it's, there are some elements of it, I think, that will still need to be looked at by future boards 20 years down the road. But we're really focused, our plan for what we can foresee in the future. So really, this facilities plan was designed to be a 10 to 20-year look at what's going to happen in Barrington 2020, not that 30 to 50-year where we really don't know what's going to happen in education in that timeframe. Just more of a comment than anything. I just want to commend the board for the last couple of years of being very transparent through the blueprint, 2020 process. I sat in on a couple of those. And, you know, I, I really want to commend the board for presenting a referendum that's very well thought out. It's detailed. It's not like this 185 billion is just going to be a slush fund that won't figure out what to do with later. I mean, it's very well spelled out, and I want to thank you for that. My only other comment would be just, you know, as a taxpayer, you know, hearing, oh, it's just another hundred bucks. I mean, if I hear that one more time from the taxing district, I'm probably going to throw up. But, you know, it's, it's, I would just really like the board to realize that, you know, if you talk to real estate agents in the area, I mean, we are in a challenging market here. And the number one issue that every agent talks about is why home sales have slowed, why home values have not appreciated, is the tax issue. And, you know, I think, personally, I think you're seeing that reflected in the enrollment numbers. I mean, they are down 8 or 9% over the last decade. And I think, you know, we as a community and as a school board really do need to kind of think more critically about, you know, that math between, you know, the tax burden and what's going on with the community. Because if people keep leaving the community because of the tax burden, then, to be honest, I mean, we're, you know, we're going to have a really difficult situation. So, you know, I truly appreciate the transparency. I am, you know, 100% behind what's going on with this referendum. But I just, I really want to reiterate, you know, that, you know, that point.
Thank you. I have a couple of slides here. Let me finish these up, and then we'll, whatever time we have left here. I think, let me roll through these. The, the website, if you have, how many people have not been to the website? Okay, a few of you. I would highly encourage you to go here. Everything that we've talked about here over the last couple of hours is on there, plus double that. Okay? There's a lot of information. One of the tax slides was on there. I mean, the spend on student, things like that. There is a lot of information on here. Every school in the district has a plan that would want to be included in, in this bond issuance. This FAQ right here, a lot of questions with answers. We update that. We'll update it after today based on some of the conversation here. So that's real time. You know, information that we believe the community wants to have in front of them and pass along to others. If there is something on there that you don't think, or we haven't answered it, one of my assistant superintends, Greg Linklin, is on the other end of that. You go into Google Doc, just type in your question, he'll get back to you within 24 hours or less. Okay? So maybe there's something you can't find, or if it's not on there, ask a question, and he will get right back to you via email. We have one more of these meetings. We're right here right now. We already had one at the high school a week and a half ago. Next Wednesday, or this Wednesday night at Station, 7:00 PM. So if you'd like to come back or send your friends and neighbors, please do. Be very helpful. And that's all we finally have. John, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to get back to the non-answer on the $700 question. If somebody asks, what happens if the referendum doesn't pass? You say, well, you know, your taxes go down $700. I know that's not the answer, and you know that's not the full answer. The guy who asked the question though, he's satisfied. He's like, $100 or 700, easy question, easy answer. But it isn't, because you're not going to turn your back on all these safety concerns. You're, you're not going to go without air conditioning when the last unit goes out. So the, the rest of that answer on $700 is, we're coming back. And these things are going to go wrong, and we're going to have to do this, and we're going to have to do that. I mean, don't let this guy off the hook. Tell him you got $700 next year, but after that, we're coming back. I mean, don't, I think your answer's incomplete as you gave it here.
It may, it may, John, it may be, but it's also accurate. Right? I mean, because we as a, hold on, let me finish. We as a board had this conversation, right? Because what you're, what you're speculating is what a future board would do. I can make a strong argument that if the community says no, it's no. You should not go back on, right? So I think that we had this conversation, do we, if, do we want as a board to commit to a path if the community, if the referendum says no? Our board explicitly said we can't commit a future board to that answer.
You don't have to commit them. You, but you can say, we have to consider the safety of our children. So the next board is going to have to address this some way. We have to do something where they're.
We'll do what we're doing now, but we won't have the funds to do what we're proposed to do. The board does not have funds laying around to do this.
That's right. And they will have to consider what to do about the safety of our children. And they will have to do this. And they'll have to consider this. You can't, I don't expect you to commit. You can't commit. But you, you see these things out there, you got to, somebody's going to have to do something about them. So don't let this guy off the hook with the $700.
We're here for, I was just going to say, love the fire, but we're, you know, there's a line that we really try hard not to cross. Like I said, I'm the one that gets closest to it all the time. But the bottom line is, you know, we all pay taxes here. We have to be respectful of our neighbors. And, you know, what I will tell you is, the $2.5 to $3 million that we allocate to take care of our buildings is, that's Band-Aid money. And I know that that sounds crazy, but that's Band-Aid money. And I have years of experience behind what I'm saying because there's a lot of property. We mentioned $1.5 million in building space. That's the insides of the buildings. We also have all the properties around the parking lots that need constant attention and so on and so forth. So we spent a half a million dollars on parking lot repair patch work a year. So, and that's to keep them safe. You can't not do that work. So other little things inside the building, we push those all the time. But we can't push roofs, and we can't push parking lots because those are two safety concerns that are direct needs that maintain our buildings. You get a leak in a roof and you don't repair it, you don't react to it, and it causes thousands and thousands of dollars in damage in other places. So we just have to be receptive to what we have. And so I think Brian said it best. You know, if it doesn't pass, then it doesn't happen. I mean, that, that's, we, we had to be responsible as citizens of this community to at least formulate a plan and provide the information. We can't, you know, do more than that. And of course, as a teacher and with three kids that went through this history, I'm an advocate, but I'm not, I'm not going door to door, and I can't do anything more than we're doing today.
Carol, we'll get to you. I've got a couple of questions, but I just want to make sure. Back to the questions, did we have an answer from the ones coming in the door?
I think the only question was, what type of training would there be? Is there training for staff regarding safety? Yeah, and I think whether or not the referendum passes, we do training for our staff for school safety.
we do training for our staff for school safety. We work with the Barrington Police Department in collaboration with them. We do an active shooter drill. We also do behavioral threat assessment training for our staff, and we're on our second round of that training, and that's through the Illinois School of Safety, uh, School and Campus Safety Resource Center.
Do we need to have the board meeting?
Uh, please do.
Angela, we used to, hold on one second.
Oh, yeah. Is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Move.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any votes? Board meeting is, is.
Sorry, guys, I took my call and left.
Go.
When we hit "listen forward," we can.
Go, so we're going to take a couple more questions, but then some of us were happy to stick around and answer more questions. How about Phil Henry?
I, I think you guys are doing a great job, and I'm sympathetic to all this. I want to summarize the feeling of the taxpayer. I just, just recently drew a graph of my real estate tax bill. In 1986, it was $2,800, and the last year it was $11,000. I know it's not the same dollars, but that's a burden. I mean, the payment on high for my real estate taxes is almost as much as what you used to pay for my mortgage and taxes. You never pay off your house because of taxes. And people are leaving Illinois in droves, as you are aware of, because of taxes. So I know you're trying to pinch pennies and get, you know, just the basic things done because you have a lot more on the wish list. But as far as the taxpayer is going, keep up the good work. And if there's anything you can do, I'll risk offending the educators here, if there's anything you can do about teacher pensions, that would help too.
That's another two-hour conversation.
Fourth record teacher pensions are set by the state, not our local community.
And it has nothing to do with this bond issue.
No pay issues.
My family and I moved to Barrington. I grew up in Palatans, we moved to Barrington about a year ago. And we came from McHenry County where our house was valued at $300,000. My tax bill was over $11,000 a year. One of the main reasons why we moved to Barrington, not to mention how good the schools are. I think this makes a ton of sense, and, you know, while I understand the transparency argument of it's going to, you know, reduce your taxes by $600 if this doesn't pass, from a timing standpoint, however, I think it makes absolute sense to, you know, start up a new, a new project like this. My daughter is five, she's, my oldest is five. She's at, this is Matthews, at Grove, and it just broke my heart per se the first time she had to go lockdown drill. She doesn't understand. We never had to do this as kids. I just think about, okay, if I don't vote for this, if something happens, how's that going to weigh on my conscience? Maybe that couldn't have been prevented, maybe it couldn't. But God forbid something does happen, I gotta live with that. Just my thought.
Thanks. It's, it's probably significant that the board knows my name. I've been an ardent supporter of Barrington 220, or CUSD 220 for the now 20-ish years that we've lived here. And I do totally understand that expenses, we all have expenses, we all have needs, we all have wants. My kids are gone. They're, they're, my youngest is a freshman in college. Education is so absolutely critical. So I, we can have everything, and, but we can have some things. And to your point, the, the name of the group that Leah mentioned is Yes for 220. Please, transparency is awesome, understanding, knowledge is power. So please, make yourselves all extremely knowledgeable about this. Think about it, you know, consider it carefully. And we would love to have anybody, you or anybody else who want to help, please go to our website, yesfor220.org. And we're going to be canvassing and sending mailers, and we're going to do all those things that you want them to do that they can't by law do. So, thanks.
We're going to have a tour here of this building. If anybody's interested in a minute. Anything else on the board? It's been two hours, so we probably need to.
Just want to say thanks to everybody for sticking around.
Yeah. And, and, and look, I will tell you, as, as board members, right? We volunteer our time, we, you know, we get selected through community elections. This is kind of a core board process, right? We, I want to make sure we understand, we hear both sides, or all sides, I would say, of this issue. From those that don't want to increase taxes, from those that want to reduce taxes, to those that want to increase taxes a lot, right? Those are all voices within our community, right? This is a community discussion and decision, right? So I would encourage you in the lead up to April 2nd, with your friends and neighbors, to talk about this. Have the pros and cons, so when you go in and cast your vote, it's an, it's an informed vote, right? And the schools, you know, and making a statement, it's the obvious, right? The schools are going to live with whatever the outcome of that vote is, right? There are times in every community when you have these decisions. This is one of them, right? Any outcome is going to be fine, we'll live with it, we'll move on, we'll still have good schools, right? So, but I encourage you, have conversations with your friends and neighbors, right? Let's make sure that whatever happens was truly the will of our community.
Thanks for everybody coming. Travis Lobb is our principal referee, he's back here. If anybody wants to stick around and take a tour of the facility, we'll do that quickly, it won't be too long, and go back there to Pat. Thanks again.